Council meeting at seven oh five. This meeting is being brought to us also on live stream. It's on YouTube channel and on Facebook. And we're coming to you over Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Carmichael.
Yeah.
Mr. Skips.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Yep.
Jacobson.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. So I show we're all present and we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then I'll ask Councilman Jacobson for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just pray. Heavenly Father, we are very grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet as a council. We ask for clarity of thought and that we might make the best decisions for our community and understand all the the choices that we have and the pathway that we need to go move forward on this. We're grateful, Father, for the growth that's happening in our community and we're excited for our future and we pray that out. Help us to make right decisions tonight. This we say in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. We got item four. It's an action item, approval of agenda.
Move to prove the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second skips.
Second by skips. Madam Clerk, would you call that, please? Call the question.
Ms. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Skips.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Carmichael.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Anyone wish to change? I see none. So on that, all we will have is that one item for old business on the agenda, which is ordinance twenty-two nineteen. So then we'll go to item five, citizens comments, which is limited to five minutes per citizen. Do we have anyone coming before us tonight, Madam Clerk?
Yep, we sure do. We have Patrice Lee on the line with us.
Would you please introduce her, please?
Miss Lee, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
I, I think you might be breaking up. Are, are, are you hearing us okay? Are we breaking up? You're breaking up a little bit there.
Hey, you, I can hear you just fine. Um, let me, I'm just going to walk to a different place if I can just get so that I'm not breaking up.
Sometimes it helps if we shut down our videos sometimes.
Yeah, I'm gonna shut down my video. Um, I didn't wanna like-
Good now, now that you're moving around.
Let's also mute ourselves. That way she has the full of the stream.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think outside is a little less obtrusive. Hopefully it's no silence. Um, well, I, I'd like to wish you all a good evening and thank you for the work that you do because um, there's no end to challenges and research and time spent and I, I know what it takes to be a public servant, although I've only been one for a short while, not long term like so many of you. So, um, what I would like to talk to you about tonight is the purchase of the Howard property for the purpose of having it developed by Ada and to build military housing, um, which we sorely need. And I want to start off by saying that I'm speaking only for myself, but in the interest of transparency, I am the co-coordinator of Citizens for Clean Air and I do a lot of work and study and, and research with the EPA. So with that said, speaking for myself, I would just like to say that I know you need housing and I'm not opposed to that in any way. Um, we need, I was a military dependent and I know what the military standards are for dependent housing and that's been a challenge for us and we have a chance to, to build out new and energy efficient housing and that's all a good thing. What I would like to say, in the interest of the short time I have, is that I hope that all the questions have been asked. Um, I'm going to send you a list of questions. I've, I've just been really busy and unable to get it to you just yet. But some of the questions are, not in any particular order. Have you had an environmental attorney look at, um, the project, the property and the type of assessment that was done? The next question is, um, I wonder why, um, Ada chose the DEC method nineteen testing for the phase one environmental assessment. Not all environmental assessments are equal. Um, EPA has one that's generally more strict, so under some circumstances, you can understand why that one might not be employed if another one is, um, gonna be able to suffice. But where our military are concerned and where families and growing people and the reputation of North Pole is concerned, just sufficing is not enough. So some of the other, um, next question is, have you considered whether or not, um, the EPA most current method for doing, um, an environmental assessment was used? It was updated in twenty twenty-one. Previously, it had been updated in twenty thirteen and there was a huge difference, um, between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty-one. Once anyone, community or personal, private, anyone buys a piece of purchase, excuse me, buys a piece of property, you are then, um, you own the property, you're responsible for the property and all mitigation and other things come with the property to you. So my next question was, in reading some of the, what was done in the environmental assessment, it, I saw only five holes dug on one side of the property. We know that two sides of the property have an underground amount of PFOS that might be moving in a direction. I was, um, concerned, and this is another question, why were only five holes dug and does, um, does the council think that having holes that are from zero to one foot deep? Uh, do you feel that that's sufficient? Now, you might not know. I don't know, but that's where an environmental attorney comes in to give you some of, um, the more complex, um, advice you might need. Um, the other thing is that I don't understand why there's a deadline of tomorrow to decide on the purchase. You've already missed most of the building season for this year. That property has been around for a long, long time and for sale. What's special about tomorrow? Um, I don't know everything, so I could very well be out of the loop. But just on face value, it raised red flags for me, that there's any deadline at all. I would hope that everybody wants to get this right, uh, for all the right reasons. So with that said, I won't take up too much more of your time, but there's still more questions and the only way you can know what's in the ground is to go into the ground. You can't see it. And five holes, in my opinion, is not sufficient. Um, and they need to be in different places. Um, why is the, why are the owners of the property not removing all the, the junk cars and debris? And if they are, I stand corrected, but I hadn't seen that in any report yet. So, um, good luck. In my complete list of questions and references to the various methods I've talked about and, um, just, I'm not, I'm, I'm with you on a project for our military. We want to roll out the red carpet for them. We said we would and we should keep our word. And that means health. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. Will you entertain questions?
Of course. If I can answer them, I'll-
I'll, I'll make them, I'll try to make them simple and then I'll ask the, um, clerk to watch who raises their hand, what order they raise it, but I'll start out. Um, first, are you aware that the deadline is not tomorrow? The deadline was, was on some other expectation that we would have had a, a meeting done weeks ago. So the deadline's been pushed. Madam Clerk, is the deadline now the twenty-seventh of the month? When has it been pushed to? The deadline is just to move. When is it pushed to?
I, I'm sorry, I, Ellie is the one who handled that piece of paper.
Ellie, I signed it today, but I'm trying to remember, Ms. Glab, when did we extend the deadline? Closer to the end of the month.
I believe that it's the twenty-second.
Okay, the twenty-second and, uh, yeah, on a Thursday. Okay, so, so that has something to do with the timing of, um, taking the money out of a particular fund that we have. If this passes, um, our reading, uh, gets passed on the night of the nineteenth, when we will have Ada there with us. I've got to ask you another question. We're gonna talk about the standards. So, uh, I'll ask you, are you aware that the state keeps waffling back and forth between whether it wants to use its standard versus the APA standard? Or, or do you have any, any idea about that and why?
Well, I do because, um, whenever there's a, a lesser standard and, and I, I use that term um, a bit loosely because I'm not an expert on all the standards. But when one might perceive that a standard would be less strict or less stringent and, um, involve less money or involve less, uh, research, uh, and it's legal, then the question in their mind might be, well, why wouldn't I use that one? And the answer to that is that if you're taken to court for any reason, the law that is in place at the time will be based on the most current standards. And your testing was done in twenty twenty-two, so the court might assume that twenty twenty-one standards had been used. I don't know. That was a question I had. Have you ascertained from your, the, the company that did the testing and Ada, what method, or if not the EPA method, how will they reconcile, should something come up in court, between DEC's method and the method, uh, EPA method twenty-one, then twenty twenty-one? Because they, they won't probably give you too much quarter, because if it was twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one standards were out there.
And, uh, last question, because I had the embargoed copy from May the twenty-third from EPA, which was filtered down to DEC. And in that embargoed copy, which has now been released to the general public, are you aware that in it, it does indicate that there were, of all the compounds, generally what they're looking at in this piece of property, are you aware that it, it, it includes two major compounds but not, I, uh, compounds three through twenty-seven? Uh, are, are you any, any way aware of that?
Well, I, I'm aware of that there, if I recall, because I don't have the, the report in front of me, but that, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, there were some, some worry about benzene and some other, um, uh, um, bio-compounds that way. And also, if they're only testing for PFOS for one or two types, there are only over seventy types. And when you combine the, uh, parts per trillion of however many of the seventy that show up or don't, uh, you end up with part, uh, parts that are way greater than the minimum standard. Uh, or, excuse me, the, the highest level that's, uh, presently stated to be safe. There is no safe level of, of PFOS and whatnot. Um, so I guess that raised a question, what are you gonna do if the PFOS then moves from where it is onto the property? Assuming, let's say, there wasn't any known PFOS on the property, but five holes isn't gonna tell you.
Thank you. And then I'll say in, in my final question to you, are you aware that the cars that you're talking about are not part of this parcel that, that we talk about, parcel number three, the Howard property? It's, it's another, uh, adjacent parcel. Are you aware of that?
Um, no, I wasn't and I apologize if I have put forward any misinformation or misconception.
No problem. Who else has questions for Ms. Lee? Thank you for answering my, my concerns and questions. Who else has anything to ask Ms. Lee? I can't see if anyone has their hands raised or not. Seeing none, Ms. Lee, um, thank you for your testimony tonight and for your concern about the land.
Okay, thank you and, um, good luck and I'll look forward to, um, keeping up on what you're, what you're working on. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay with us if you please. Thank you.
Guess I'd like to listen for a while.
And, uh, Madam Clerk, anyone else for citizens comments?
Nope, no one else.
Seeing none, I show citizens comments are now closed at seven twenty. So we have before us under old business ordinance twenty-two nineteen, in ordinance of the city of North Pole, Alaska, to amend the twenty twenty-two general fund budget to purchase parcel number three, the Howard property. Who do we have, Madam Clerk, to introduce the ordinance?
Moved to-
Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Moved to introduce, uh, or I should say moved to adopt ordinance twenty-two nineteen.
There's a motion to adopt by Jacobson.
Second.
Second by Cromer. Now, um, any, any discussion, uh, and especially when it comes to, um, the fiscal note or anything? Madam Clerk.
Would this be an appropriate time to talk about the developer's agreement language?
Yes, you can, but also want, um, while we have, um, while we had her there, maybe we don't now. So we don't have, um, but do we have the, uh, fiscal note that Ms. Fogarty provided us? Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Down below? Can you slide it down for me?
Yep, hold on a second.
Or put it up there? Yeah, we will discuss the developer's agreement. Yes, you're right, but. Yeah, I've got the fiscal note moving right now. Is any question about the fiscal note and why it is what it is and where in the count it comes out of? I see no, no questions for that. So it's right, right out of our AMLIP and that's out of our AMLIP reserve. So just to keep in mind, uh, we will determine later whether we're, whether or not we're allowed to use ARPA funds. But if not, it'll just come out of Alaska Municipal League General Fund pooled cash account. Thank you. And now, we can now discuss those items that have to deal with developers agreement if you choose. Who wants to go first?
I'll go again.
Go ahead, uh, go ahead, Jeff. I appreciate taking the lead on.
You bet. Um, under, um, item two A, uh, we need to change that language to reflect the language that we use, uh, for all, uh, acceptance of water, sewer and street projects, uh, by the city council. Uh, similar to what we just did last week with the resolution to, uh, approve and, uh, accept the water and sewer improvements over in Stillmire Estates and also the curb and gutter street improvement. So that language needs to kind of match that.
Madam Clerk, can you put that up for me, please? Thank you. We thought we had this pretty well spelled out, but, uh, so two A.
Yeah.
Uh, upon annexation, you're talking about that portion there?
Right, so i- i- you know, the, it's, it's not clear about what our process is when it says this property will be provided with city services. Um, it, it needs to reflect that the, you know, the, the, the city will, uh, accept the water and sewer and street improvements that have been built to our standards. Something, you know, something that, that we've done. I think, I think the last resolution maybe had some language about that or maybe Danny might have some specific language, but it, I just don't want there to be any, any confusion that they could hook up it, they could provide water and sewer and then say, okay, you gotta take it over and, and it's not built up to our city standards for maintenance and, and safety.
Do you think it would be, um, more advantageous for us to work on this document and have it provided at the next council meeting? So that we get the wording like we want it? And that we have an opportunity to run it past one more time, past, uh, CSG?
I'm okay with that.
Well, how's the council think about that? Anyone have comment on that? Because I think, uh, our director of city services made a salient point that that needs to be better defined than what it is. And Danny, do you have any problem trying to put those words together for, in time that it's, uh, available in our packets for Thursday to go out to the council for next Monday's meeting, Danny?
No issues.
No issues, okay. So you can help with the wordsmithing and we'll, we'll use our, um, resources with, uh, Renee Broker, because Zane's not back, so we will stick with Renee, because she's been with us through this thick and thin. And that would be, uh, what else do you see, Danny? Uh, or for that matter, Councilman Jacobson's got the floor. Uh, Jeff, what else do you see needs to be worked on?
Well, I think we just need to remove C completely. Uh, we, we've already discussed that.
Yes.
Unless there's somebody on the council who's changed their mind.
Does anyone wish to discuss the removal, complete removal of item C that says that we're gonna be, uh, adopting the, uh, property tax abatement from Navarre? Okay, so we'll have that struck through altogether. And, um, if we talk about B, are we under the agreement that they think B means in a generic sense that what we're talking is that this property, if it were to be annexed, would then be, become part of the military facility zone? So that could be straightforward like it is. Because they will have to work collaboratively with us with, uh, annexation. There's no way that I can do it, you could do it, any of us could do it unilaterally without them working with us and that's what, uh, Gene Terrio made an offer for. Okay? So, and it runs with the land in perpetuity unless amended? Is that all the rest of that, Madam Clerk? Anything? Ada shall have an initial two-year period to complete the initial infrastructure phase of development after we transfer the land. So if we transfer the land to them, let's say in May, which is the earliest I think we could under what the boundary commission told us, if we could transfer it in May, do we then tell them they have only two years that they have till May of twenty-five? Or can we extend it out like it says? It may be extended, it should say extended, not may be extend, but extended. So an ED needs to pay about one year, if mutually agreed upon by the city and Ada. And I think we have to look at disruption of, uh, supplies and we have to also look at the workforce too, could get in the way because of what we call MILCON, military construction. Do we see anything else in there?
Nope.
Is that, is that okay then, that we fix, that we strike C? What does that say that was, uh, you just went past it? Uh, it's, it's got blue and it, understandings. We'll, we'll fix, we'll, 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 we'll get the words fixed on it, the grammatics fixed on it. Okay?
So Mayor, are you, are you, are you thinking that in four C that you're gonna extend it? Uh, Ada shall have an initial two-year period to complete the initial infrastructure phase of development? And they added the language after transfer of the land to Ada?
Yeah. Is that good after the transfer of land to Ada? In other words, they don't want us to say that the shot clock starts the day after tomorrow.
Right.
Tax starts once the land has been transferred to them.
Correct.
Which would be fair enough, because they can't do nothing with it till we give it to them.
Right.
Oh, it's been annexed. Okay. Good enough?
I don't think it says annexed and it just says after transfer of land to Ada.
Well, that's what they, I think that's what they mean though. So we'll have a discussion with them to know that's what they mean, but that's what they mean. And we can't transfer the land if we don't own it, can we?
No, we, we buy it, we transfer it, they own it, but annexation is an ongoing process, but the clock started when we gave them the property.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna build and move on ounce of dirt until we are annexed, because if they're not annexed into the city of North Pole, then their whole umbrella says what they can do with, with that. You know, they, they can't work on it unless it belongs to them and they can't, uh, you know, they can't improve upon it till they own it. And they can't get any of, of this stuff, you know, what, why would we buy a piece of property that's not gonna be in the city? And so further up, it says that it shall, it shall be annexed.
But that's not a requirement though. Why are we putting a requirement that it has to be annexed, uh, before they can do, do any improvements? They, they're not requiring it now, so why are we putting that language in there?
The transfer of the property from the city to Ada contingent upon the annexation of the property into the city. That means that it cannot be given to them until it is annexed.
Okay, I, I see that, I see that.
Yeah, and that was discussed in front of eighteen citizens in the green from August twenty-second. Okay.
Okay.
And, and what they wanted in red, I guess, is, is, uh, is perfectly, uh, what every citizen, uh, every city, city streets and, and, and property gets, right? I mean, uh, we, we do, we do provide the city and city water and stuff like that, because that's necessary there. And, and we plow the roads and we provide fire, police and ambulance to all our city streets. So if it's, and like Jeff said, it needs to be spelled out that it is up to the standards of our, our building codes. As should, as should all the stuff that's built on there should be up to the city codes, or we cannot take it over.
Are you finished, Ms. Welch? Because Dejean has his hand raised. Dejean, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, clarification. Uh, isn't this the, the upon annexation, uh, annexation, um, that part, isn't that what Ada wanted? Like, can we just not agree to that and C? And just move on from there? Because, you know, that, that's-
That is not what Ada wanted.
Is that what we want to put in there, the upon the-
We, we, we say that the reason that it should be annexed is if you live back in there, you're gonna rent a home in there and it doesn't necessarily mean just the military, Dejean. It could be anybody who, who is a law-abiding citizens that I want to rent there. Don't you think they want to have police protection? And first-class fire and first-class EMS and their roads maintained and their street lights working and turned on and all. You cannot have that if it's not annexed. And if you don't have an annexation, it's not part of the military facility zone. It has to be inside the city of North Pole to be in the military facility zone.
Okay. I, I just, I just read it wrong, but we already have the language in there about these, the, the, um, the water and the, the, has to-
We're gonna clarify the language is what-
I mean, isn't it clarified in section A or, I don't have it on front of me, but section A? It is, doesn't it say where we, you know, it has been the city standards already?
It does, but, uh, Dejean, you're right. I missed it. In, in section four, um, A and C, it talks about the, uh, standards that it has to be built to.
Because I remember Zane was like, yeah, we have to put it, or the, the lady from the, our lawyers already, uh, put that language in there.
It's in there. I missed it earlier, sorry.
Under part B, four B?
Yeah, four B and C, yeah.
But I feel like, I mean, after reading, clarifying, I, I feel like we should be, be able to pass this as is. I don't think we need that much clarification, because we already have-
We do.
The, the language already in there.
Okay, you can lower your hand unless you have something more to add or ask or say. Anyone else? Madam, Madam Clerk? On this issue, would you call the question?
What are we voting on?
On twenty-two nineteen, I, I can't see it.
Okay.
She turned my screen. You've just taken down what I had. It was there, now it's gone.
Okay.
So, so point of information here, so if we vote it up, we write them a check tomorrow.
No, we don't write a check tomorrow. Can't be done that fast.
Well, whatever. A few days from now, we write them a check and we buy the property. Well, whatever, a few days from now, we write them a check and we buy the property. If we say yes.
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 Okay, so if we don't, if we if we want some of these things. Negotiated, i.e. taken out of there, or whatever it is that we want, some of the red stuff that they added? Or is it standing, is it standing? Because what we're voting on is the one that they have amended, not the one we passed last time.
No, we're, we're voting on the ordinance, not on the developer's agreement, it's just on the ordinance.
Just on the ordinance for the check. Just for the fiscal.
And so so if we can't, so here's what I wanna know, if we then at the next meeting, when we discuss the the agreement and all that? If we cannot agree to these terms of it? Is this, is this previous ordinance then null and void?
I say it may, it may very well be, because on the nineteenth, seeing how Ada couldn't make themselves available to us today. We will be available with them in a workshop. On the nineteenth. Does anyone have a problem if we started at five thirty? Speak now or forever hold your peace is uh Monday the nineteenth. That's uh three days before we would have to pay for this. Is that adequate time? For get them to come to a meeting of the minds of what a mutual agreement should be in the first place, mutual.
Then I would, then I would like to make a proposal on this, that we have some kind of an amendment. That's gonna reflect that, that if we cannot come to terms with them, that this automatically nulls and voids this. Because otherwise, we might be buying a piece of property that we. Really don't.
There's one other thing that we could do.
Postpone it.
We could postpone this and put it up on the nineteenth. With the caveat that we want a mutual agreement nailed down with Ada. We could do that. And uh that would also give us time, whoever wants to dig into it, to look at the standards that Ms. Lee had told us about. To say, what is the standard? Were they using an old standard or not? I don't know. I don't know. Santa, see, you got your hand raised. It's hard to see Santa's uh artificial hand, because it blends in with your background. I can never see it, Santa. Go ahead, Santa.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm wondering if there's a way to uh postpone it until after? There's a decision made on the mutual development agreement between Ada and the city of North Pole for parcel number three, Howard property.
Yes, that's what we're discussing. We think we'll just postpone this until that time.
I think the. The agenda would have to be in the order of uh approval of the uh developer's agreement. And then we'd have to approve the ordinance uh to purchase the property. That would be the the order of business for next Monday night.
Right, so we would go first with the developers, mutual agreement would be first. It'd still be considered old business, cause it's already supposedly been agreed upon, but it wasn't agreed upon by them. So we would put that up first and then if it passed. And if and only if it passed, then could we go to this ordinance to actually pay for it? Is that pretty much the way we wanna do this, correct?
I move, I move then that we uh postpone the vote on this ordinance till the next meeting. And after we have approved the development agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Welch to postpone this decision tonight and seconded by. Santa Claus. Um, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call the question.
Mr. Cromer?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Skip?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Your cause?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, does anyone wish to change? I see no one wishing to change, therefore, this has now been postponed until September the nineteenth, as we discussed. We'll now go to item seven, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second, Skips.
Adjourned by Welch, seconded by Skips. The time of adjourning is at six thirty.
Is that Monday meeting by Zoom or in chambers?
By Zoom, it's still by Zoom, seeing how they still don't have our uh system.